The City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, November 7, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM. May please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
On item four for approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item five for presentations, proclamations of recognitions, we have 5A for the city clerk, the community shred day, and school supply drive presentation.
One moment, Madam Mayor. Sorry, my brain's playing catch-up. All right. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, on October 26th, we held our first annual, maybe bi-annual, community shred day. We did well for our first time. We collected almost two tons of paper to be shredded. So it's a good start. It's a great start. I appreciate Mayor Vanabosh, Commissioner Hendrick for assisting on that day. I was running back and forth between here and over there and with elections and stuff going on, so thank you for your help and volunteering to help with that. With that, we coupled it with a school supply drive for Bell River Elementary and Holy Cross Elementary. And you can see here in front of the podium, we did pretty well with collecting school supplies for the local elementary schools. So tonight, I wanted to present both of those schools with their school supplies. I have Principal of Bell River Elementary, Robin Smith-Hur, and Principal of Holy Cross Elementary, Betsy Davenport, so if you guys want to come up.
And we will present you with your baskets of goods, Bell River. I think the Chiefs can maybe help you. In the front, for everybody, over the left, however you guys want to do it.
You can set it in front of me. I don't know.
Do we have someone doing the photo? You're welcome. You're welcome. Wrote them into that one. Perfect call.
And now, we'll go on to item 5B, again with the city clerk, and it's the 2024 Election Inspector Certificates of Appreciation.
Okay. I promised myself I wouldn't rant on tonight, so I'll keep my report at the end, very, very short. But I thought this was important to you. We had three elections this year. In 2024, we had the presidential primary in February, the state primary in August, and the general election here in November. It was tiresome. It was long, especially this past two weeks. This was a big election for us here in November. So these election workers have been around for a while. We have some new ones here with us, and they're the true heroes of this. I'm the city clerk. I administer the election, but I'm the face behind the scenes. I set them all up, and I make sure I set them up for success, along with my deputy clerk, Carol Brown. But they're the true heroes. They do all of the work. They put in the hours, and I am very appreciative of that. So I wrote a short little speech, and I'll try to get through it as quick as I can. Madam Mayor, Honorable Commissioners, and members of the public, today I stand before you with a deep gratitude and immense respect for the unsung heroes who make our democracy possible, the election workers. From the moment the polls open to the moment they close, you are there, always on the front line, working tirelessly with precision, ensuring that every eligible voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot and that every vote is counted fairly and accurately. You are the backbone of our democracy, the silent warriors of civic engagement and the guardians of the integrity of our elections. Excuse me. It is easy to take for granted the process of voting, to assume that elections just happen, that they are automatic and seamless. But we know the truth. Behind every election is an army of dedicated individuals, from poll workers to election administrators, to those who count the votes and ensure that every single person's voice is heard. Your role is critical, and your commitment is invaluable. You work long hours, often under pressure, with a calm and steady professionalism. You do so with a deep sense of duty, knowing that your actions, sometimes behind the scenes and sometimes directly in front of voters, help protect the foundation of our democracy, free, fair, and accessible elections. Your work requires patience, precision, and integrity. You ensure that every voter's rights are respected and that every vote is treated with the utmost care. And of course, in times of challenge or uncertainty, you maintain the highest standards of professionalism no matter what. On behalf of all citizens, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your dedication, your sacrifice, and your service. Thank you for being the true champions of democracy, for ensuring that our elections remain fair and our voices continue to matter. As we reflect on the success of any election, we know that it is thanks to your hard work and your unwavering commitment that we can take pride in the democratic process. You are the ones who make democracy work, and for that, we are deeply grateful. So to all the election workers, thank you. Your service does not go unnoticed, and it is deeply appreciated. You make us all proud, and most of all, make my job that much easier. So thank you. And with that, Carol, if you can assist. If you'd like to come up when I call your name, I have a nice certificate here for you that you can frame, hang up above your mantle, all your family to see. Ralph Beatty. Thank you. Deborah Dimmick. Alan Imboden. Stephen McConnell. Karen Peterson. Thank you. Lori Posey. Thomas Posey. And then I have a few that aren't here tonight, but I still want to make mention of their name because they all worked hard for the last three elections. One new one that we're hoping to recruit here from Washington Township, Ray Township? Both, a little both, so I think we've got them on a hook. We're working hard. Aaron Deitch, Scott Pascoe, Barb Watson, Dave Needenthal, Mary Westlow, our very own Michaela Roy, who could not make it, and our very own Audrey Hollenbaugh. And then two special ones, even though they don't want it, Katie Posey. Thank you, Katie. Not only did Katie kind of help in the office during all the elections when Carol and I were running back and forth, she did work a couple early voting days, so that says a lot about who we have here working for the city, that they're dedicated and can take on more than one role. So for that, I'm appreciative. And last but not least, this isn't a far walk, but Carol Brown. And I just wanted to take quick and thank you all. Scott, I wanted to thank you here for two elections, kind of giving that support up in the office, that moral support, keep us going. And Mike, you were here for the last one, and thank you for the support up in the office and checking in all the time, making sure we were all right, and keeping on the right track to get this election over with, so. And I want to thank you all too, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I wanted to thank you all for your support through this whole year. It was tough. It was new for me, but we got through it and made sure the elections ran as smooth as they could, no issues, so I'm good with that. I'll knock on wood. I still haven't heard from the County Board of Canvassers yet, but I'll knock on wood for that one.
You did a great job, Jason.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone I missed? I guess I should have asked that. All right.
Now, on to six for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes. The commission will not respond, but will follow up as necessary, and if you do speak, please address your comments towards the commission and myself as the chair. Is there anybody for public comment?
Yes.
Public comment?
Hi. The meeting just gets more fun. You guys could stay.
Okay. See you none for public comment. We'll move on to item seven for approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of October 17, 2024?
And make a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes of October 17, 2024 as presented?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? He carries. On to eight for the consent agenda, we have the pension board meeting minutes of July 30, 2024, the pension board retiree healthcare meeting minutes of April 30, 2024, the special event permit application for the Mike Miller River Run, and the special event permit application for the Friendsgiving 5K and One Mile Tyler Krilter Memorial Run. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through D.
Support.
Motion to support. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to nine, items removed from consent agenda, we have none. Onto 10 and 10A, under financial business expenditures, including payroll, of $1,739,664.72. I have a motion to approve the expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $1,739,664.72.
Make a motion, we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $1,739,664.72.
Support.
Okay, the motion to support. Any discussion?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, and I confirm this with the city manager, the bulk of that is for payment to F&amp;V for services rendered related to the safe drinking water grant that will be reimbursed, so. It's a scary big number, but not really that big when that's factored. Did you have anything to add? I didn't want to steal your thunder.
No, I have no thunder.
All right, if another discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10B, the Kennedy Industries invoice for $2,020.50. I have a motion to approve the invoice for Kennedy Industries in that amount of $2,020.50.
Make a motion, we approve payment of the Kennedy Industries invoice for $2,020.50.
Support.
Any discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10C, we have the Compass Minerals invoice, and that's for a salt purchase, of $3,089.24. I have a motion to approve the invoice for Compass Minerals in that amount of $3,089.24.
Make a motion, we approve payment of the Compass Minerals invoice for $3,089.24.
Support.
And motion to support, and we have discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, under financial business, for D, the NiHeart Pension Actuarial Valuation Report. I have motion to receive and file the NiHeart Pension Actuarial Valuation Report as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto 10E, the NiHeart Retiree Healthcare Actuarial Valuation Report. I have motion to receive and file the NiHeart Retiree Healthcare Actuarial Valuation Report as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto 11 for unfinished business, we have 11A, the final ARPA allocations.
Thank you, Mayor. We received notification in the past week, I think earlier in the week, that we had not yet allocated the remaining funds under ARPA. They gave us warning that we failed to do that here shortly because the deadline at the end of the year is upcoming. We would have to rebate those funds and lose the access to those funds. That being said, there's a number of different items I think that could be allocated to the ARPA funds. So I met with the staff, and we went over a number of items that we would be asking for at different phases over the next several months. And what I'm proposing as we move forward, and you'll see a couple action items tonight after this, but just to give you a heads up, you'll see at the next meeting, Office 365 Government Edition, that moves us into this century in terms of our operating system for our computers. And down the road beyond that, you'll see Jason has arranged for fiber to be in the building, and then you'll see additional technology upgrades coming soon. And this budget, excuse me, in this meeting here, you'll see the gate at the wastewater treatment plant. A portion of that is coming out of ARPA. I'm recommending a mini excavator for the DPW, and I'll explain that when we get to that purpose, and a trailer for the DPW. And with those purchases, upon their approval by the board, we would exhaust our ARPA funds and meet the requirements and not be in jeopardy of losing those funds. And I'll be happy to go into detail why we decided to use ARPA funds and each one of those purchases, how they would meet the guidelines, and also fit into the areas that you, you folks, had earmarked the funds to but not allocated.
Do you not like getting notes from me in notepad? Text documents?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mike, regarding Office 365, does that involve an annual subscription, or is it a flat-out purchase?
It does involve an annual subscription, and next month, when I bring it, I'll give you those numbers in terms of the annual subscription increases on that, and also for BSNA, where I'll be moving us to the cloud here shortly, and also purchasing additional modules to help run the financial backbone of the city, and as well, take care of permits, licensing, and a bunch of other open-ended items that I've discovered. I'll tell you that if you watch any TV at all, you realize the world is quickly moving away from just basic cable, if you will, or the basic email systems. There's a deadline date coming up soon, and I don't want to be at the end of the line when the prices are at their highest in terms of labor to get them done, and we'll really have no choice at that point and be up against the wall. I'd like to be a little bit proactive. Please attack things proactively.
The only thing I was going to ask is, since it has to be, I believe, spent or allocated, it's...
Allocated and spent, allocated by the end of the year and spent by, I think, it's June 30, 5:00.
Okay. And the excavator gate items and trailer are available?
Available shortly. If I don't move quickly, some of them will not be available.
Yeah, but just wanted to make sure we're dotting i's and crossing t's. They're perfect. Thank you.
And that's all I have on the ARPA funds, Mayor.
Okay. So we'll go on to 12, under new business.
Do we need to make a motion to approve spending the ARPA funds?
I'll bring them individually, if you would.
Okay.
Yeah, they're farther down.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, under 12, new business, 12A is the China Township Water Agreement Amendment.
These amendments, as we work through these with City Attorney Davis and our administrative team, we're going to kind of divide these up and towards the expertise, and we're going to start off with the main expert right off the bat, if you will.
So we put together an interlocal agreement draft for water distribution between the City of Marine City and China Township. The purpose is to govern the relationship that we're in where we're delivering usable water to a defined and designated area of residential housing that exists in China Township. We've defined them as the township units, and what, if you read this as a whole, the theme is this, is that we're going to supply that water supply to those residential units per interlocal agreement, but those folks are going to pay exactly what we pay without discounts and without any sort of, any sort of discount. So if you look through this agreement, it is pretty clear that we're expecting to put the supply to the main meter, which is located on an exhibit, and that we will measure at the meter. The second thing we're trying to do is, we don't want to be in the business of collecting and billing and invoicing and dealing with each house, so we are going to bill and invoice with the township itself based off the master meter, and they can deal with each of the individual units in calculating who owes what out of that master meter read. This is an agreement that has been in the works for quite a while. It's something we need to do. The way I've set it up is, there's an indemnity provision, and there's a pretty extensive billing provision. Basically, we're going to bill them the way we bill our folks, so that there's an even playing field. I think you do have the right to bill them at a higher rate, but I think we're going to settle in on billing them our rate. They will pay a rate that encompasses all the elements of your water billing, you know, the ready-to-serv charge, the debt surcharge, all the surcharges that are on everyone's water bill. So what we did was, we put this agreement together, and we contacted China Township through their legal counsel, and we said, hey, we have to get this going. We have to get this over to you. We're going to take it to our board in November and get a motion to support the interlocal agreement. We know we're not, this may not be the end of the drafting, because they're obviously going to have some comments, and their lawyers are going to have some comments. But I think if we don't, if we don't, as a supplier, push this into the form of an agreement and say, we're supporting this form of an arrangement, that this is never going to get off-center, and it hasn't gotten off-center, so I think it's time that we do this. I think you all know where the residential units are. I think we all understand.
King Road.
The King Road. We'll call them the King Road Residential Units. It's nice that we're able to provide the service. I think it's a great thing. I think we have the capacity to provide this service, and I think that's a great thing. So we're happy to do this, but we need to button it down in an agreement.
So we've been providing, though, the water for a while. So how have we been handling that until now?
Well, we've been billing it, right?
The same.
But we need to get it into
Correct.
...our billing system.
Yes.
Right? It hasn't been, I'm not going to say it's inappropriate. We're built, we just need to get it under agreement.
Yes. And this is a little different than the Cotreville one that we have.
Yeah, we're going to tackle those next. Your upcoming meetings, you'll see we're going to move from all your relationships with Chinatown. I want to talk about the sewer agreement in a minute, and then at subsequent meetings, we're going to go to Cotreville and talk about the water in the sewer that we're doing there, and some of those agreements need to be updated in the same way. So we're going to try to use this interlocal agreement for defined water distribution format going forward for those who we supply water to. We have to be made whole, folks. You provide a service, you have to be made whole. So tonight, we're looking on this interlocal water agreement. We're just, we're looking for a motion along, you know, a move that we pledge our support to the interlocal agreement as presented, and that we understand it'll come back to us if and when Chinatown provides their review for final approval.
And just for the public's sake and clarity, as rates in Marine City changes for our residents, their rates also change in accordance. That's part of the rate agreement, as you have in, under item six, cost billing and payments. If that stays consistent, it's something we're all in together.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to drive, yes, you are correct. In the last sentence of paragraph six, I tried to drive the point home, just so the folks know, the objective of this provision is to ensure that the township units, which I spelled wrong, by the way, pay the same total cost as imposed on the city residents. That's the goal. And so, yes, and we don't have to seek their approval when we change our rates. We just change our rates at our normal public meetings like we do, and we usually get some good discussion on that. They can follow it if they choose to, but yes, they pay those same rate increases that your citizens pay. So that's what we're doing, and strategically, you know, what I, you know, maybe some people might want to, you know, have it here in final form, but we need to push this ball a little because you're the supplier of this product. No, I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure the other party is in a hurry, right? But I think we need to push this forward.
Yeah, it's been dragged out a while.
Yes.
Are we missing payments from anyone we're dealing with when it comes to sharing water? Just because that's kind of been a background question to what we've been asking here for clarity.
Now, we are slowly going through all of our water supply agreements. If you start going through the Cotreville relationships, they evolved, as we found out, right? They evolved over time. There were like, you know, a little water over here, a little water over here. We need to take all of those relationships and put them into an interlocal agreement similar to this format, and say, here's what we're doing, Cotreville, here's how you're paying, and here's how we're billing you in the same format. So it's an undertaking, because you guys have been nice over the years with these agreements, and there's been a lot of them. And Lisa's right, when you start looking at all the agreements with Cotreville, there's a lot of them, and we have found a lot of them
Yeah.
...into the 80s and some before that, so. So right now, we want to push this one forward. I want to be able to call the lawyer and say, my commission is on board with this. We need your input. Thank you.
Can I get the motion to support the amended Chinatown Township Water Agreement as presented?
So moved. Support.
Any other discussion?
Can we correct the spelling?
Yes, I already did. Yeah.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We have 12B, the China Township Sewer Agreement.
So back in 2018, you, you asked me to put together the China Disposal Agreement for Sewage, and we did that, and we got it signed and executed by both sides. It came back to you, and you wanted to recoup your costs in getting this agreement in place, and I worked that out for you. I think we got a check for $4,500 to cover the cost of getting this in place. Now, I've, I've, I've contacted their attorney as well, and, and made it clear that we need, we all need two amendments to that agreement. And that's what's before you this evening, is paragraph three A and paragraph three I. Paragraph three just makes it clear, we, we got our calculations in order, of, of what the capacity we will be providing. We had our engineers, Scott and, and Mike, work with the engineers to get that figure in place for me, so that, it, it was something that was left blank in the original agreement and needs to be filled in. And then, and then the three I is, is again, is again stressing the idea that you're going to pay the rates, you know, that are, that, that we're, we have in Marine City, and those can be changed from time to time, and you're going to reimburse us for those costs. So that, that provision, three I, was in there, in the prior agreement, but it, it really needed some strength to it. So we contacted China Township Attorney and said, look, we're, we're going to send you over this amendment. I'm going to get my board on board with these two changes because they, they need to be made. And, and again, I'm asking for you to support these amendments in their current form, recognizing that China Township will have an opportunity to comment on them. And again, I tell you, if we don't push on this, it'll linger. And so current city manager is, is asking that we push, push on these.
Yes, because I've, I've had, actually, I've had questions from China Township residents about this, whether they've gotten charged for the sewer, and they're all concerned they're going to get a big bill all at once, so.
They're not.
Yeah.
They're not. But they are going to start paying their fair share.
Yeah.
And, and they have to, they have to be prepared to pay for all of the debt service and the, and the different things that come along with, with receiving our services.
Except, what about the new bond thing? That's not theirs, so is it ours?
But, but it'll be part of the bill, it'll be part of everybody's bill. They will have to pay that portion of the bill.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all part of the system.
So receiving the service.
Yeah.
Because they pay the same as our residents.
Just so that, if the question comes up.
Yes.
It's gonna.
Yeah, I mean, Lisa, we're not going to go back and like, you know, issue some crazy, you know, we're just going to, the point of both of these agreements is, whatever our, whatever we're imposing on our folks, we're going to impose it on you. If you want the services, let's put it in writing.
In terms of counting them, it's done by number of users or, because in the instance, anyway, of, of the water one that we just approved, we're metering it by one, one master meter, right? And then it's up to the township to divvy up who, you know, so they would presumably have meters per house, but, you know, we normally charge a meter fee and other.
Right, but, but even your sewer gets billed off through your mast, the master meter.
Right.
Right. And, and again, we're
Presumptive on water usage.
Yes, that's a good word, presumptive. It's a, no, it's a very accurate, because people sometimes don't understand that relationship.
Right.
That's a good description. But what we're, what we're, what we're saying here is, whatever rates we're putting on water and sewer, you're going to get the same rates. We're going to bill you the same way, and we don't want to be in the business of going unit by unit and collecting. You're going to do that township, and we're just going to bill you, and you're going to pay us within 30 days.
Okay.
So paying fair share equal between Marine City residents, China Township residents? I, I really appreciate that. I think that's the right approach. I want to be clear about that. But in three I, this statement, the applicable Marine City ordinances as amended from time to time at the sole discretion of Marine City. My one concern about this is that China Township residents are getting signed up to this and are going to at least feel that they don't have an individual say. Like, are Marine City residents can push us on our ordinances, our amendments, and our approaches as sitting commissioners, as the local government? And I don't think they're going to feel they have that authority or that power as residents who are involved in having to pay this fee. And so what is, for clarity's sake, what is their path for the individuals that want to say, wait, we should change the rates, or I want to propose this, or I want to push on this? They go through their local government and China Township. What does it do from there if China Township is unhappy with the agreement? Do they have any recourse? Can they negotiate with us?
Yeah, they come to us. First of all, those, those folks would have the same right as your citizens have to come to public meetings and express their opinions. But government to government, China Township can pick up the phone and say, look, we're getting some blowback on, on your recent rate increases. What, what, give us some, give us something to say as to why it's happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And with it, can I have the motion then to support the China Township Sewer Agreement as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12C, the federal grant policy for local government. The city manager?
Yes, one of the requirements for you receive federal dollars or pass-through dollars, and I think perhaps sometimes you don't think about all the federal dollars we do receive in a number of ways, whether it be Stone Garden, or the Water Project, or other part grants, or state grants, or COVID grants, ARPA grants, is the requirement for a policy, a federal policy, on how you utilize those grant dollars. So our city attorney prepared a federal grant policy for local government, and if you want to speak in depth on it, Bob.
What a pleasure this was drafting. So we, we, your, your, your staff did a nice start of a three-page document, which I read, and then we, we ran it by Curtis McBride, your expert accountant consultant, who indicated there's a series of Code of Federal Regulation provisions that you have to have. You have to have them in your policy. And so we got ahold of those Code of Federal Regulations. Putting them in verbatim would have been horrible. So what we did was, we took the Code of Federal Regulation provisions, and we, we smoothed out the wording into this policy. I know it's long, but it needs to be in place. And by having all of these provisions in there, you are satisfying the requirements that otherwise would not be satisfied without those Code of Federal Regulations in there. Jacob, you probably know all about this, dealing with some of your businesses and these. Sean, you've probably been exposed to these types of policies. They're not simple, and they're not easy. But I think what you have in front of you is, is a policy that, if you were audited by the federal government, you know, this policy is, is really going to come in handy.
Can I have a motion to approve the federal grant policy for local government as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for putting this dry piece of documentation together.
Lovely assignment, Mr. Ross, lovely assignment.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12D for ordinance 24-007, the debt service rate language as ordinance number 51.37 for the Drinking Water Safe Revolving Fund Project. First reading.
I think we have a guest speaker tonight.
So we worked on this as a team as well, and Scott drew the short straw on the presentation for that piece.
Commissioners, members of the public gallery and those that'll watch us in the future. I always wanted to say that. Bob Davis. No. I, I felt it was appropriate in, in discussing with the city manager, in discussions with the city treasurer and finance director. And again, in going back and looking at this and speaking with Mr. Davis, we thought a refresher would be appropriate for any confusion or people who may have forgotten how we have gotten to where we are today on this water project. So I have provided a small little PowerPoint for each of you that will be made available, and we'll have it put on the website. We've had a number of items on the website. This has been a very public process for about two years with action that has taken place with the city commission. So I'm just calling it Safe Drinking Water Project 2024, but I think we could subtitle it Lessons Learned From Flint and Other Communities, because really, that is the basis of this, is ensuring that we have safe drinking water. So I want to provide a little historical background, which I think, again, is very important for us to reiterate for the public, and again, we'll, we'll have this available. Because it does stretch over a couple of years, I think it's important to provide that refresher. So historical background, significant deficiencies and potential future water quality concerns were identified relating to our water treatment plant, our distribution system, and water storage in a 2020 water reliability study. This was a study that was commissioned by the city and was performed by engineers that specialized in water treatment processes. Extensive site visits and evaluations were conducted by Eagle, which is Environment in Great Lakes from the state of Michigan, former DEQ, former DNR, it's changed names a couple of times, and that occurred in the summer of 2022 to ensure compliance with the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act. Visits and evaluations resulted in the city water system being deemed as in violation of safe drinking water and the Safe Drinking Water Act, although, and I want to stress, we had no immediate health hazards here to the residents. So anybody consuming water, we may have had various boil water alerts that occurred because of water breaks or things like that, but again, there was no significant health and safety threat to our residents. So I, I think that's important to state again. I don't want people to think that we sat on an issue for over two years where we were having, you know, contaminated or tainted water. That was not the case. What was identified, again, from these evaluations and visits, was an aging infrastructure system. Our water system, in many cases, the pipes in the ground are nearly 100 years old, the water treatment plant nearly 100 years old, and although we were trying to keep up on maintenance and improvements, over time, those kept growing and growing and growing, and we found ourselves in this situation with just being a matter of time before a significant issue could occur. So as a result of these evaluations and the visits, an issuance of an administrative consent order from Eagle was given to the city in March of 2023, which required corrective actions to be undertaken by the city with strict compliance deadlines. So we initially were given this information in 2023. There were a number of items that were identified and specific timeframes in order for this consent order to be fulfilled. Again, none of those were something that was immediate, that had to take place within 24 hours, 30 days, but as the time clock ticks, the reliability of the system, especially because its age, continues to become or could become problematic. The ACO, which is the Administrative Consent Order, identified 30 critical items to be addressed, and original estimates to address and correct the deficiencies were estimated to be in the range of $25 to $30 million. So again, very complex, dealing with pipes and infrastructure under the ground, valves, hydrants, other appurtenances above the ground, and the water treatment plant, as well as storage, so the water tower, those type of pieces. This is very detailed, very inclusive, the entire drinking water system. I think it's important to stress, and that's why you'll see this red text, system improvements were required with or without any funding assistance. So when this administrative consent order was issued to the city by the state, it basically said, these are the items that need to be corrected, you have a timeframe to correct these, and you must do this. Now, looking obviously at $25 to $30 million of items, the city then began to move forward with the assistance of our engineering firm and consultants on identifying potential sources of additional funding. If the city were to take this on and have to put this burden on the backs of all of the residents and users of the system, as I'll detail here in, in just a moment, it would be undaunting. Without any additional funding, individual residential cost, this is for the standard residential user, who generally has a 5/8 inch service and water meter, that cost, without any assistance, to achieve what is required by a consent order would have been 63, approximately $63 per month, which equates to $189 per quarter or $756 annually for standard residential users. And that's, again, those, we have over 2,200 folks who have that standard 5/8s meter. We have some other residents, a small number that have 3/4 inch meters. We have about 100 that have a 1-inch meter. But again, the average user, the majority of our system, $756 per residential unit a year. That, as you can tell, is undaunting. So the city then began to move forward and look at ways, again, in trying to reduce this cost and seek additional outside assistance. We were very fortunate that at the time, there was a large influx of state and federal money into infrastructure from various infrastructure bills, and we were able to make application for a grant and a state revolving fund, which is a safe drinking water revolving fund. This was done in May of, excuse me, it would have been done in May 18th of 2023. I will correct that in the PowerPoint that you have. Again, we made an application, unanimous approval by the city commission at that time to seek the grant and also the state-backed revolving fund loan. Application was submitted to the state of Michigan for both the grant and the revolving fund loan to seek assistance to defer and lower our costs. It was determined that the city had significant needs, and we were actually qualified and considered to be a financially overburdened community. It means essentially $25 to $30 million worth of costs on a city of 4,000 residents. Obviously, at $63 a month puts us in a overburdened status, which was a good thing to be placed in because that was one of the main qualifiers for a competitive grant, which a number of communities across the state in the hundreds applied for this grant. It was a competitive score grant, meaning they identified the needs in each community, equated that to a percentage. The minimum percentage was 85%, and we scored 90%. One of probably less than a dozen and a half communities to score at the top. And that's important to state because after that percentage, there was no money left from the state for these grants. So we were very fortunate to get within that window. By being able to attain the grant and moving this process forward, we, again, were able to get additional funding assistance. So we did put forward formal bids and solicited contractors to perform the work. The bids were received and approved by the city commission in the amount of $23,585,000, which was less than the original proposals. So not only did we get a very competitive pricing, we were able to initially then lower from what those estimates were. When the estimates became a reality of cost, there was an adjustment from 25 to 30 million down to 26 million, and ultimately came in just shy of 24 million total cost. And I think that's important because, again, every dollar that gets lowered saves the dollars that go forward to our users. Again, we applied for the grant program, and we were successful in achieving the grant. This, again, reduced that cost to our users by 50% from the original proposal. The grant was $11,363,586, and that left a remaining portion that we qualified for the safe drinking water loan. This initially, without the loan, the grant itself thusly reduced the potential cost to our residents down to, at that point, would have been $31 per month, $93 a quarter, or $372, $372 per year. With the application and approval of the grant, which is a state-backed grant, it's a 40-year grant at 2%, a rate that we couldn't get from a lending institution, and again, backed by the state of Michigan through the sale of bonds, we were able to cover the remaining $12,221,414 cost by spreading it out through this guaranteed loan. At that point, our estimated cost then reduced again to approximately $15 per month, $45 per quarter, $180 annually. And we bill quarterly. So again, for most residents, we've now gone from a high dollar amount at 63 a month or 180 per quarter, moving our way down to 45. And I think that was most of the information that had been shared through the course of this past summer, August, September. The bond sale occurred in September, and the funds were then provided to the city. The bond sale occurred in September, and the funds were then provided to the city. Additionally, the city worked administratively and worked with experts in the field of engineering, worked with Mr. Davis, and of course, welcome to the, welcome to the journey here, Mr. Reeves, to put these numbers together and to recommend, and these are your action items tonight, for some amendments to our ordinances. Most importantly, to change the ordinance, what's known as a resident equivalent unit, meaning, for instance, Commissioner Ross, you have a home, you have one residential, what's known as an REU. You have an apartment complex that's located in the city that has 24 units, they did not have 24 individual REU units. And I think it's important to stress that because a family in an apartment should be treated the same as a family living in a single residential unit. And many of these apartments, they have a master meter, they don't have individual meters. Again, that's the importance of this factor known as an REU. You're all treated the same, very similar to what's been proposed for the townships. And by the way, this also includes the rate structure for the township users in both Cotroville and China Township, that those costs would be the same. So again, adjusting the ordinance to equate simple equivalents for users in a single-family setting or in a multi-unit apartment, everyone has the same factor going across. It then brought us to a point of being able to further reduce our estimated $15 per month or $45 a quarter to what you will be asked to present in a first reading tonight, bringing that dollar amount down to $32.76 per quarter, which equates to $10.92 per month if people want to break it down monthly. Much lower than what we had been telling everyone for the majority of the summer. We had estimated it was going to be about $15. At one point, I think we set our goal saying we'd like to get this between $8 and $11, and we worked very hard to craft the language with that REU factor that lowered the individual costs down, spread the costs fairly inequitably. I do want to note that people who again have a larger meter have larger usage. That dollar amount is a little bit higher, and I did put that in the spreadsheet that you have attached in the PowerPoint. If you have a 1-inch meter, you're essentially using almost double the amount as a normal 5/8s. So that amount is a little bit higher quarterly, $65. We only have 100 again of those meters in the city. Users in an industrial commercial setting, we have just a handful of those users that will have a 2, 3, or 4-inch meter, but they are high-end water users, and you can see they pay accordingly. Those factors are engineered factors that are based on the American Water Works Association equivalent for REU factors. So this isn't something that we just kind of grabbed the magic eight ball and said, okay, this is where we think it's at. There is a formula, that's a nationally recognized formula that was put to use. So again, what I think would have been overwhelming, I don't think, clearly would have been overwhelming, at $63 per month or $180 plus per quarter for our residents, we now have, in an area that's manageable, within the realm that we were hoping and targeting for, and it is an amount that we will review every year as part of the budget process, as we have more single-family homes being built, which we do have currently. If we add more multiple-family units, that number will only adjust hopefully lower and continue to go forward. But we'll look at it on annual, on an annual basis and adjust these using the same formula if approved. You know, again, nobody likes to see increased costs, but I think if we look at the subtitle I said at the beginning, Lessons Learned from Flint, nobody wants to have unsafe drinking water, unreliable water system, and you know, really be in a position that we don't want to be in. So I think that we've worked very hard collectively as a team. We brought the experts in between, but it was important, even though lengthy, kind of think I'm all sitting back down here again, important I think though to point this history back out. This is something that has been in, you know, the works actively for at least two years, and really over the past six to eight months, nose to the grindstone to try to lower these costs for our residents and, and be able to get that in something that's more manageable. So I will be more than happy to answer any questions on any historical background, but you'll have two items to address this evening for our first reading. And again, I think Mr. Davis can probably provide additional answers when you get to that point, but crafted language that wasn't in our existing ordinances, which meant, without having the ordinances amended, we'd have no way to be able to collect on this fee schedule, and we did not have language in there in regards to that residential equivalency unit, which I think is so important. We identified 273, I believe, multi-unit developments or facilities in this city that otherwise would not have been paying. We would have been back up to the $15, $16 per month cost had we not taken those factors into account. So it's the right thing to do, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Will this be posted on the webpage?
Yes, we're actually going to create a separate area on the website for the entire project. We had pre-construction meeting about a week ago, so we'll be able to put timeframes and more details, and although not operational yet, if you want, you can scroll this down, but we'll have it available. We will have a separate email that will be set up for this. It will be waterproject@cityofmarinecity.org, and that will be an email for people that have questions. When the project starts, if people are having issues, that email will come into the city. We're also going to have that email go directly to the primary contractor on the project and to the engineer that's overseeing the project. We don't want to have any delays in responding to our residents for issues and concerns from this project, and we're going to, no pun intended, flood the information into the website to ensure transparency and availability. We will even put the administrative consent order on the web. I think that's important. It is a public document. We've had it available here for a year and a half, but we want to be able to have it so people can look and actually read the details. It is an eye-opener when you really look at the total feat of lines that we have in the city, the ages, all of those pieces. But again, to ensure safe drinking water, this is a project that only gets more expensive as time goes on, and we were so fortunate to be able to qualify of one of only a handful communities that got the grant and the loan. So thank you all for your time.
And was it, would also show with the roads being fixed as well, like to emphasize that?
Oh, important, yeah. Important point again to reiterate, and we've mentioned it before. Based on the fact that most of our water lines are actually under the roadway, under the sidewalks, if you're going to replace water lines, you have to take the roads, the sidewalks, those pieces out to do this. They will be replaced. That's value added, although this is a safe drinking water project, you can't replace the lines and the things underground unless you take out a significant number of streets, which will all be put back in as new streets going forward, and those items were included in the bid. We'll again have the details that will be available on the website of the streets. We've had this information out before, but we want to again have it at the click of the mouse for people to be able to get that and see. Not every street is covered under this project because not every street has water lines under the roadway. However, in the very near future, this commission knows that we're working on what's known as a Paser road condition study, and I would imagine that your city manager have that in front of you within the next month or so of at least identifying the other streets and conditions and to create a working list to address those. And if perhaps we have some roads that are identified at the same time with this project, we may be able to see a benefit from a contractor who's already mobilized it on site. So very comprehensive project, a lot of details, and we just want to make sure that we keep the information going forward. So, and I want to thank Katie, Bob, Mike, Jason, administratively, a lot of hours, a lot of time, as well as our engineering firms to put all this together, so.
If I may, a couple of quick comments. We, we haven't had negative hits on our water. There are no PFAS score, right, to my understanding. We haven't had a lead crisis, but 106 lead service lines, and they're all getting replaced in those, right? We, we are poised to become a Flint water crisis if this wasn't done, and...
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of time, Commissioner.
Right. 106 lead service lines is frightening, and so I'm very glad to see this going on. I want to underscore that number. And you've brought, this project has brought the, what would have been the imposed increase, increase in burden on our residents down by almost 83%.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's massive to get this down under $11 a month for most of our residences. I can't thank you enough. I want to underscore how dramatic of a shift this is to bring this down this far. Thank you.
Did you have any numbers for galvanized? Because they have to do lead and galvanized.
I don't have the galvanized numbers. I, I was very concerned about that.
Well, we are also replacing everybody.
Galvanized has to be done also.
Yeah, there, there had been a survey done as part of the pre-planning on this to identify lead and copper lines, including galvanized lines that have lead that's been detected. I also want to point out, in addition to the 100-plus that you've mentioned, the city has been moving forward in the past several years, replacing a number of those lines. We couldn't wait for this project to go forward on some of those. So there, there are additional services that have already been replaced that won't be replaced again. There, there are new lines that are in service, and that was something that, that we would not have been able to tackle all of these remaining ones, and we are likely to find some more that had not been detected, and those will be taken care of as part of the process at the same time. So again, it is a comprehensive, safe drinking water project to address those items.
As the project goes, will we be able to add the new service lines and the condition of the existing ones into the GIS data that, at least it was touted in their engineering presentation, AEW is capable of doing?
So this project, which is being overseen by FNV, has required that the information be provided to us electronically. So we'll have the GIS information, we'll have digitized maps. When it's done, what they call the ASBILs will all be electronic that can easily be, easily be ported over to GIS. And I know coming to a commission near you, the city manager is working with AEW on that GIS piece. We have a multi-phase pricing that's been put together, and that's something that'll have to come in front of you for a phased approach, but the work that's already been done and digitized is going to help defer those costs because we've been able to do it through this project. So yeah, the intent is to be able to get that. Paser study is electronic, so those road conditions will be able to overlay into a GIS system as well.
As I indicated in my update to you, a number of those are close. It's just a matter of a couple more meetings. Paser is probably the closest, the GIS is a little bit behind that, but we're working to get the rest of those together, and I hope to bring them in a package.
And I wasn't trying to chide the timing, just hoping that it would, you know, doubly benefit us as, as was mentioned. So that's good that it, you know, the work being done here could parlay into future benefits for the city too. So I'm, I'm just glad to hear that.
Thank you.
I get to go back to my comfy seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 24-007 to add ordinance number 51.37 regarding debt service language for the drinking water safe revolving fund project for the first reading?
I'm making motion to approve ordinance number 24-007 for first reading.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to E, we have ordinance 24-008 to amend the water sewer rate ordinance number 51.35 for first reading.
Making motion to approve ordinance 24-008 for first reading.
Support.
Any other discussion? Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to F, we have for the police department, approval to apply for Michigan CAPS grant. And we have Chief Tesla with us, excuse me.
Glad to be here. Thanks for having me. So over the last couple of years, the, the state being MCOS has issued monies in the way for grant opportunities to have agencies sponsor a candidate into the police academy. It was a $30 million project. They just reallocated an additional pen for this project. I want to take advantage of this. What the grant includes is $20,000 to cover the cost into the police academy and wages as, as your candidate is through the academy. City manager and I spoke about this. It's, I think it's a great opportunity. Local guy in town, young man's also a fireman with, with Marine City. He is loyal and dedicated to the city, currently just, well, recently hired him in as a reserve officer. Guys love him, the, the public loves him, chief slangster rant and raves about him. I want to take this opportunity to use those funds available and sponsor him into the police academy. So I'm asking for approval to start that grant process to get him enrolled in the police academy.
I would note, Mayor and Council, that upon graduation through the academy, that we would offer him a part-time position, and then when a full-time position become available, or if we were able to add a body at that time, we can, he would be the candidate we would look forward to. At this point here, we don't want to lose him to another agency and maintain him with us.
So, so part of this, like, like I explained to city managers, I'm trying to do some succession planning. I, my sergeant is slated to, to leave January of 2026. Shortly thereafter, about five months, the longest full-time officer is slated to retire after about 31 years here in May of 2026. So, and then I currently have my midnight guy who's also looking to leave, and he's chasing the money. So I'm just trying to plan ahead because jobs right now are, are so few and far between, and the ones that are out there, new hires, candidates are going to where they're getting paid significantly more than what I can offer. So this is an opportunity. He's, he's assured me that if needed, he would sign like a five-year contract to stay with us. He's not going anywhere. He's loyal, he's, he's embedded, lives around the area, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Chief, we, we've been using this as a very great program, by the way, and it's worked in other small communities because it, it kind of creates a little bit of glue between the person and the community which survives post-receiving all the benefits, and we've had some very good success rates with the candidate staying.
Yes.
You know, even though they could go somewhere else. It's hard to contractually bind them. You can, we can, there's language we can, we can, we can mess around with, but it's difficult, but the glue is really in what you're doing for them upfront. It's a great program.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it if, if I get approval.
And I, I know the candidate you're talking about from the fire department as well, and in these, all of everything that you said and Chief Slangster says, he is, he's a great, great candidate, big guy.
It's hard to find hometown people, and there's nothing better than when you find a hometown individual that decided to stay here and make their home here and raise their family here. That's the kind of candidate you want to call to think.
I'm going to make a motion to approve to move forward with applying for the $20,000 Michigan CAPS grant to sponsor a reserve officer through the police academy.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Quick question. This covers up to 20,000 per recruit?
Yes, sir.
Is that the entire cost of the academy, or how much is the expect?
So, no, so fortunately, I left a few messages with the academy, and they found it back to me today. Because we'd be the first-time organization sponsoring someone in the academy, we'd get a first-time discount, and this, this number blew my mind, but that number to put somebody through the, the police academy is $4,500. I thought it was going to be significantly more than that. So doing some quick math, 16 weeks in the academy, it starts the end of January, he'll graduate the end of May, so 16 weeks roughly, eight, eight hours a day at $25 an hour, I'm probably going to be about $8,000 or $9,000 short in my budget for that. In order, so the 20 grand will cover most of his wages and the entry fee into the academy. But if I, if I lose a guy, I'm going to, I'm not going to be able to backfill him until I can get somebody available. So there'll be, I'll have some leeway there with my budget.
And we'll make the necessary arrangements for budgetary purposes as we go forward. I've talked to Katie in terms of, we have planned out budget amendments as we go forward. We'll see where we fall in terms of using the grant and the amount of money that's in the grant, and we'll bring it back to you, make sure you're aware.
That was about to be my next question. 20,000 is a significant chunk, but if it's not all of it, we need to, i- if we can get this grant, we should be supporting to make it.
Well, look at it this way, you'll spend the difference in overtime if you can find the bodies to work it overtime. Great.
Unfortunately, as a reserve officer, he fit into a lot of old equipment that we had, so we didn't have to spend any money on that. He didn't have to spend any of his money. He was provided all the necessary equipment just because we had a quartermaster locker with all the equipment in there, and he just tried everything on, and we're like, that just saved me a lot of money, so.
Well, we looked for that, he had to be so slim, and I think that was one of the He had to be so slim, and I think that was one of the requirements.
Five foot nine, five foot 10, maybe. I think he claims he's 6'2", but that's with, like, pinch heels on, but he's okay.
Great, great program, chief.
Thank you.
If no other discussion, I roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
On to 12G, the wastewater treatment plant gate repair.
In your pack, Katie, you've noticed three quotes for repair of the wastewater treatment plant gate. This is one of the, if you will, a list of dings that was issued to us in regards to problems at the wastewater treatment plant. And it's my intention to start knocking off those items that they have found and disrepair. So, you'll see in the future, repair of lights that have been out years and such of those. This gate issue has been for quite some time. So, I had him get the quotes, and he's recommending, as indicated here, the one for international controls and equipment. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Bob. And these are, we're utilizing.
Partially.
Partially ARPA funds, and the rest comes to wastewater treatment plant budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the wastewater treatment plant gate repair for international controls and equipment for $7,712.
Support.
Mayor?
Yes.
You would need a motion to waive competitive bid first.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bid.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can you let me repeat the other one again?
Nope, I got you.
Okay.
And to finish this one, do we have to break it down from ARPA funds and the budget in the motion, or are we good?
No, just the total. Just the total.
We have the motion to support on that one?
Yeah.
So, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12A for DPW utility.
Real quick, yeah, sorry. Now that I'm looking at it, yeah, ComStar is who we selected, not international controls and equipment, right?
I'm sorry, let me look back here.
Oh, the motion was addressed for $7,712.
No, I, yeah, I read the company.
I may have said the wrong company. I said, I think I said the correct amount, but the wrong company.
Okay, which?
Because it recommended doing ComStar for $8,557.75.
Yeah, that's what I had on my.
Which one are you doing?
Under the recommended action, it's recommending ComStar instead of international controls and equipment, $7,712.
That is my mistake.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right.
But, we, so, is your recommendation, Mike, for ComStar?
It is for ComStar. That is correct.
Okay, at the higher amount?
Yes. Because it does meet all the features that are required in order to complete the repair.
All right.
Six hundred and change dollars.
Just amend the prior motion.
All right, I'm going to amend the prior motion that we go with ComStar for $8,557.75 for the wastewater treatment plant gate repair.
Resupport.
And if there's no other discussion, then roll call.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sorry.
Now, on to H for DPW utility locator purchase.
Thank you. Yes, I was made aware that our current utility locators have significant issues. They can't get through multiple reeds, and at times, they don't pick up all of the underground utilities. With the projects such as the water project that we're going to be experiencing, it's important to know where to dig, especially if we're working in conjunction with the construction companies. So, I had him go back out and seek bids for a new locator that's accurate and be more efficient for them to use. They wouldn't have to come back to the shop and recharge the battery after two or three rounds and things of that nature, and replace the ones that are old and obsolete, candidly. And Aaron did that. He recommended the locator from CNS Solutions for $6,542.69.
I'll make a motion, we approve the DPW utility locator purchase from CNS Solutions in the amount of $6,542.69.
Do we need a waived bid on that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, sorry, we'll back up. Make a motion to waive competitive bidding. Competitive bidding, geez. Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then my other motion again, CNS Solutions, $6,542.69.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to I, DPW mini excavator purchase.
Okay, when I met with the DPW employees and their superintendent and looked into the operations department and talked to employees, one of the things that they talked about at great length was the lack of available tools to do the work that they need, or the right tools. And I think I made you aware of a couple instances in terms of having no tools whatsoever, and I corrected some of those issues already. This has been a long need for the DPW. I'll tell you, the two areas that will be utilized the most will be in the parks and the cemetery. And what I had found is that in the past, because of the larger equipment that they were using, and they had asked for this previously, but apparently it had been denied at the supervisory level, they would have difficulty in not disturbing grave sites or artifacts in or around the grave sites that they were working. And I found that to be a significant problem. The last thing you want to do while working in a cemetery is disturb anybody else's grave site or any of the artifacts there. But, more so in the parks, not, excuse me, not more so, but also in the parks, we do a lot of work that's adjacent to the sidewalk areas and landscape items, and you can't get a large back hole in there. So, the reality is you destroy or you upset the ground worse than if you had a small piece of equipment that you could bring in there. It's on tracks, it's a little easier on the ground, and you're able to do a little bit more precision digging, if you will. And a lot of the work is precision digging. There's a time and a place for back hole, as Jake could probably tell you, then there's a time and a place for a mini excavator. And I found that it would make their jobs much more easier. There's multiple uses for it. So, I had them go out and look for a piece of equipment, and we looked for about four weeks to find the right piece of equipment. I wanted to find something that has basically low hours, had been reviewed by a reputable dealer, that wasn't a high-hour, high-use machine, or they weren't using it for use outside of its intended use. And you'll find that a lot in construction equipment. And they submitted three bids, one we're recommending is a purchase of a 2019 CAT 303. It's a hydraulic mini excavator. It's a track-driven mini excavator, and this is, would be entirely ARPA-funded. It does meet your original allocation for use in the parks, and I'm hoping that you'd also understand the use in the cemetery would be two of the main uses for this equipment. And then the next purchase down the road would help us in other areas, and I'll talk about that. But, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the reasons why, and as I indicated in the background information, I think it's extremely important that while we're doing that type of precision digging, that we don't disturb as much as possible or destroy artifacts or grave sites or anything else.
So, I see it has rubber tracks, which is good, because the steel ones tears stuff up, something fierce. And it looks like you have standard hydraulics without the second auxiliary circuit. Are we getting attachments for this, or is this just for the thumb and maybe attachments later on if we need them?
Just for the thumb, and then later on if we need them, we'll locate them. You know, the problem is, when you find a good one, they won't hold it, and they wanted me to put money on it right away, so I had to kind of sweet-talk them to say, hey, I'll get to you by Friday if you just give me a minute, and we've got other guys who are ready to bid on it, so I had to kind of jump on this one.
No, I mean, it's a good machine.
And it also had to fit the price range I needed to work in order to get the rest of the stuff accompanied.
Yep.
Just a brief comment, maybe you can speak on this tonight. We are doing a lot of waiving of competitive bids for several of these items, and in our packets, in the agenda packets online, there are other options that are being listed. These are the best deals that we've found at the best for the need. That piece is being addressed. I don't know if there's anything more you want to say on that, but we're not just being given one option.
No, as you see, there's multiple quotes on what we try to do with similar pieces of equipment, but Commissioner Bryson said, they're not all the same, and they're not, you know, all specked out. And when you find two alike machines, the conditions of them are such, sometimes it's better to pay a little bit more for the machine that has less hours and less wear and turn it, because you'll cost yourself less money in the long run. So, it's, sometimes it's a difficult process to put out for a bid or quote, because then you're looking at new machines or lease turn-ins, and it's an extended period of time. Remember, the clock's ticking on the ARPA funds. I know I've got to allocate it, and I've got to spend it, and these machines don't wait for people. They turn over that quick. So, it's one of the reasons why I had to do it like this.
Not to mention, we, the voters just approved the movement of the purchasing policy from the charter into a purchasing ordinance that we will.
And we're working on that, and you'll be seeing that come into you soon.
And we may not be needing to make so many waves of competitive bidding based on the way that that works out.
Well, that'll be true.
Yeah.
But, it is important, and I hope you realize that I try to get the best bang for our residents' tax dollars, and we'll never just come, it'll have to be something really, I shouldn't say never, but very unusual, we come with just one quote. We'll always try to price-check that and make sure that we're getting the best deal possible.
To that end, I motion we waive competitive bidding to purchase the mini excavator from Michigan CAT.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of that mini excavator from Michigan CAT in the amount of $42,900 using ARPA funds?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the mini excavator from Michigan CAT for the sum total of $42,900.
Support.
No other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to J, the DPW trailer purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. With that mini excavator with tracks, it's not really meant to be driven on the streets. You'll tear up the tracks, and it's not, it doesn't flow as well, I guess I could say, it has a back hole down a length of travel. But, more importantly, the trailer is for multiple purposes. They have other equipment they have to haul, and right now, they have one trailer that's really just designed for lawn equipment. They overload that one, and then when they need another trailer, they have to stop the lawn service part of it, unload it and take the trailer, go over, do what they can, but then reload it back up for lawn stuff, and then he can finish up their work. So, I asked him, so what's, how about renting trailers when we need them? Well, come to find out, we do things, because we lack the equipment, things that I think are probably not the right idea. As an example, the kayak launch. Without a trailer, we try to load it in the back of a salt truck or a large truck and balance it so that we could get it for storage purposes. Well, you damage that, it's just not the right way to do it. With a trailer this magnitude, you put it down in the trailer, use the correct binders and chains, and then you transport it that way. If we're planting trees in the park, don't throw them in the back of the truck and then dump them out, set them on the trailer, properly secure them. It's just the right way to do business, and I'm trying to get these guys the tools they need to do their job the right way. And a trailer transporting that, a mini excavator the correct way allows that to stay longer, to stay in great shape, not ruin the tracks, and not have maintenance issues. You know, it's just another piece of the equipment that would help them do their jobs better, and, you know, they transport a lot of stuff to a water main break. Here's a trailer, they can throw it right on with a mini excavator, they're not making multiple trips. They get it out there, they can set up and stage, and they can go to work.
The other piece of that is that if, at some point, the machine's going to break, I mean, it's inherent, if it's, if the malfunction is something that is beyond the DPW's capability to fix it, you're going to get a much better labor rate from Michigan CAT if you take it to them versus having them come out to you.
You have to pick it up, you're in trouble.
Yep.
So, the trailer is definitely long and large enough to support the kayak launch?
Yes. I had them look at several different trailers, and they all favored the tilt trailer, and I talked to them about that, and using a ramp trailer or, you know, this is what they wanted, and, you know, I'm not going to change what they want. If that's the equipment they're comfortable in working with, and they say it'll do the job, they're the guys that are doing the job. I think I stand behind what they request.
Can I have a motion to waive competitive bidding to purchase utility trailer from UTS Equipment Company?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the purchase of the utility trailer from UTS Equipment Company in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and five dollars using ARPA funds?
Make a motion, will you approve the purchase of the utility trailer from UTS Equipment Company for seven thousand five hundred and five dollars? Support.
No other discussion, can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to thirteen administrative reports, we have thirteen A, the city attorney report.
Just briefly, as Brian mentioned, the charter amendment's passed, I'll have a memo out to you next week. Just sort of recapping, what does that mean we have to work on now? So we have a list of all the policies, ordinances that we now have to put in place based on those charter changes. So you'll have that next weekend, we can start checking them off. We've already started the process.
Excellent.
City manager's report.
I've talked enough tonight and I've sent you enough information, I think, unless there's, I'll answer any questions you may have, but I'll have more for you to later do.
No, I would just like to thank you for signing this report. It was, our report for this, this week was a four-page report and is very extensive, a lot of information. And matter of fact, I have just gotten done reading this, probably within a half hour and I had a resident contact me with a question and I already knew it because I read your report. So, thank you very much for that.
Thanks.
Then on to thirteen C, reports from department heads. We've got several today. We have the fire chief, we've got the police chief, we've got our finance director, we've got our clerk. No?
I go last, I always like going last because I'm up here.
Jim, you got anything?
All right.
Joe?
Merits of Office 365?
We're getting to that.
Okay.
Just leaving it to me. All right. Just real quickly, I wanted to go over some numbers from this past election here. I think we did, did very, very well with the election. I promise this is the last time I'm going to bring this up this year and I am tired with it, so I'm sure you are all as well. Just for statistic purposes, absent voters, we sent out, I'm on the voter dashboard here, sent seven hundred and ninety-four, received seven hundred and forty-nine back for a ninety-four percent return rate on absent voter ballots, which is excellent, phenomenal, choose your word. I mean, that, that's, that's just great. The amount of people that came out to request an absentee ballot and then return it is astonishing. Early voting over the nine days, six hundred and seventy-five people and on election day alone, eight hundred and forty-eight. So I believe that number, if my math is correct, two thousand two hundred and forty-seven over those three categories with a sixty-two point four percent voter turnout for the entire November election, which again, in and of itself is phenomenal. Carol and I talked during this whole election cycle, you know, you're lucky to get a fifty percent voter turnout and that's considered high. So sixty-two percent is, is great, a lot of first-time voters, a lot of new registered voters within the last week alone, all different ages, it's not just eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds, it's fifty, sixty, seventy-year-olds registering to vote for the first time. So that, that's a great, great turnout here. Again, I took the whole time up there to thank my election workers. It was a job, it was a job and we knew this election was going to be busy and they all did great under pressure, thought on their feet, made quick decisions and, and made sure this, this election here was fair, secure and as efficient as possible. I didn't take the time, though, up there to thank Carol. I thanked her before, I think in August, but having a deputy clerk that is interested in elections and actually enjoys them oddly, is always a good thing. I'm glad we were able to lure her away from St. Clair, so I apologize to St. Clair's clerk, not sturdy, but I think we've got a good one with Carol. She, she never complained, she was here just as much as I've been over the last two weeks. She helped me prepare for this election, day in, day out, registering voters, getting absentee ballots together, setting up the poll booths. It's, it's always good to have a deputy that is willing to do everything that you're doing and then go above and beyond and do their own duties as well during election time. So Carol, thank you. And with that, I think that's all I have for tonight.
Good job, Jason.
I'll take any questions if you have them.
Great work.
Thank you, thank you.
Move on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
I have nothing for the planning commission at this time. I want to remind everybody, the, I believe it's the twenty-sixth of November, is the Santa Parade. So I have to start working on the parade stuff, so. Just be, be safe, we had another worker get killed this morning on a, on a work site, so watch out. I had a guy this morning on a three-wheeler, riding, a good older guy, riding down the middle of M-29 and making a turn right in front of me as I'm making a left-hand turn. And he's gonna race me in the turn, so, and I had to stop. Just watch out for these bikers, not the motorcycles, it's the ones with the, they pedal. That's it.
Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Always something. Halloween, we just had, I know election was a big deal, but we had Halloween and trick-or-treaters. I think we, my house, we had about a hundred kids come through and the amount of young, joyful, jubilant families that were out and about here, very young children, very young households, it was a beautiful thing to see, it was a wonderful thing to be part of and it's very promising for the future of Marine City and that was really great to be part of and to see. I want to thank, a special thank you to the election staff, all the work that all of you did from the top to the bottom, fantastically well-run, very smooth for our citizens and thank you to each and every voter that turned out, whether it was an absentee ballot, it was early voting or was here in person, this was really important. Our elections matter and you made it matter. I want to thank the city manager, fantastic report here on the work that's being done. You're pushing the team hard and I think in the right direction. Department heads, tonight we've approved a lot of equipment and this is really important. If we're asking you and demanding you and your crews to do jobs, you need the equipment to do the jobs, it makes the difference. It addresses every issue citizens have brought forward over the past few months when you have the right tools and this is very important that we keep doing this. I want to offer a congrats to my fellow commissioners who run your election. Wasn't too contested, but, you know, well done, good job, glad you're back. And congratulations to Madam Mayor, what fantastic race and fantastic results, thank you for being here. Finally, to the public, I think the last several presidential elections have had a lot of anxiety. People are nervous about what this means and where it goes. Whether you've been winning or losing, there's anxiety around elections that, that's newer in life for a lot of folks. Keep the faith, keep the faith in the system, when it doesn't go your way, you hit the ground by getting out the vote effort, getting involved. We have local government to get involved in boards and activities and actions where you can participate and shape your community, it matters. Participation really, really matters, not just voting, not just running for office. There's a lot of different ways of getting involved and I implore the public to keep the faith and keep going. This has a big result in people's lives, thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Thanks. To add to that, keep in mind researching for your local elections is probably more impactful for your daily life than even the national stuff. It's very important to do all your research, not saying to relax on that, but just, you know, be sure you're looking into your local candidates as well. And as Commissioner O'Brien said, I am particularly happy for the faith you had in your commission and your mayor. And it's a testament, you know, the voters spoke and said that we like what's going on here and I very much appreciate that. To also add, the Halloween stuff was, kids were super respectful, we had a ton of kids as well. And one thing I thought that was neat, I hadn't seen this before, but there were tractors with hay wagons driving around. So it's like city meets country and everybody's getting along and I thought that was wonderful. So we did have a three hundred Broadway committee meeting. In it, we discussed a lot of what was going to be, hopefully, quoted by the engineering firms and everybody was very supportive of that. We had some more discussions surrounding the business plan and some pro formas that were going to be looked at. But, you know, a lot of crucial things hinge on being able to, you know, have quoted this item from, from the engineering firms. So everybody was looking forward to that. And I also see that there's a three hundred Broadway grants thumb drive on my, at my place that I will review very quickly. Have not yet, but it is there for me. Go Mariners football tomorrow. Pulling for you, boys and girls. Too many girls on the team this year. Nonetheless, pulling for you, do your best. And the water project, I want to thank everybody for, you know, moving forward with that and I'm very excited, I wrote down waterproject@citymarinescity.org for any questions regarding that. The new website, you know, again, feel free to send either the city or any of us questions, issues with it. You know, it is a new and process thing and the company UniBit has actually already hit, I think they've hit all of us up for doing a little like interview. I don't know, I received, I received an email from them saying, we want to know how your website's going. So either that's spam and I should ignore it or I'll forward it to you just in case.
No, don't forward, don't, don't forward.
Right, and just ask for social security and a few other things for the card numbers. No, it was, I'm pretty sure it's legit, I'll send you a-
Yeah, I wasn't aware, yeah, just don't forward it.
Kate from UniBit, but nonetheless, there is still an opportunity to, you know, change things. So the only thing I found is no, no blanket search command, at least in the mobile version. But other than that, again, send your feedback and we'll make it better. But the, the fact that it has all the things for tracking, I love and the, that this water project email will be introduced for following that. Very excited. Again, thanks and everybody be safe.
Commissioner Rurg.
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'll make it quick, I want to thank Jason for the shred date, it was fun. We had fun with this guy that ran the shred truck and, you know, hopefully we can do it again. So I know a lot of people came in, they saw us, they pulled in and they brought their shreddings and one guy brought us two truckloads. He was really excited about it. So, no, it went really well, everybody brought stuff, it was really a good thing. I want to thank Jason for putting it in, hopefully we can do that again and maybe we can do something else as far as, you know, what you want to put that towards, but it was a great, great thing. And I also want to thank Jason and all the election workers, I mean, it's phenomenal, it was, it's very difficult work, especially for the nine-day duration, that's a lot to do, so they did a wonderful job. The Holly Jolly Santa Parade is November twenty-sixth. If there's anybody that still wants to get in, you can, just get ahold of Andrea Schenk if you need any information, I have that for her. And I also want to thank, I know, three of us, it was an uncontested run except for the mayor, but I want to thank people for still coming out and supporting us all and supporting the mayor. We're trying to keep this town going, we're trying to, you know, we're working with a good guy now and still another good guy. We got both of you, we got both of you, but we're working with both of you, it's just-
We got a good guy now.
Sorry, Scott. No. Another good guy now, I'll correct myself, I'm sorry. Because it's just, it's great to work with both of you. I mean, the water project, that's huge, bringing that down from that kind of cost, it's absolutely huge.
Yeah, just remember it's not a tax.
No, but, you know, it, it means a lot for a lot of people that can't afford, you know, it's, it's hard for them now. So bringing it down that low is really, really good, so, and that's it.
All right, I just have a couple of quick things. Thank you to Jason and Carol and the election inspectors, again, for the tremendous job that you did. I was here all day and I got to see some of it, you know, and just how busy it was and then you had the additional absentees and the early voting as well. A tremendous job everybody did there. And thank you to all of our city employees for, for the jobs that you guys and the work you guys do every day and hopefully all these things that we're able to get past and provide you guys will help you with the jobs that you do. I'd like to thank all the voters, thank you for having the trust in us up at the board and thank you for passing the charter proposals because now we can get some other things updated from that that we've been needing to do. The CED, we're gonna have a combined October-November meeting on November thirteenth and I believe that is it then. But thank you again, everybody, I really appreciate your support and thank you to voters. And with that, we're gonna go into closed session. The closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. It's a recent city attorney opinion under MCL fifteen point two six H. The commission will enter into closed session to consider that material. We can move into closed session into the conference room at City Hall, we'll return to Guy Center once the closed session is completed. And once we come back, we will open back into open session. More than welcome to stay here in the building and we will move. There may or may not be any action taken upon our returning into open session. And with that, can I have a motion into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.